Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular village council meeting for Tuesday, May 7th, 2019. But first, can we all stand for a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the record reflects those who are present. I will now call the roll. Councilman Melz.
Here.
Councilman Brady.
Here.
Vice Mayor Birch.
Present.
Mayor Wagler.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you.
Next item is the acceptance of the 2019 runoff election results. A resolution of the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida declaring the results of the Miami Shores Village Council runoff election held on April 30th, 2019 to determine the successful candidate to fill one vacancy on the Miami Shores Village Council as certified by the canvassing board and providing for an effective date. Whereas at the regular election held in Miami Shores Village, Florida on April 9th, 2019, the candidates Stephen LaFredo and Christian Alvert received a tie vote by the qualified electors in said village, and by reason thereof it became necessary to hold a runoff election between the two candidates. And whereas on April 30th, 2019, said runoff election was duly held in Miami Shores Village in accordance with the laws and ordinances of the village and of the state of Florida. And whereas the canvassing board has canvassed a certified, the runoff election results in the village council of Miami Shores Village wishes to adopt the election results as certified by the canvassing board. Now therefore be it resolved by the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida that a canvas of the returns from the runoff election held on April 30th, 2019 discloses that from 7,228 qualified electors residing in the village, 1,812 ballots were cast at said election. Said returns disclose that two candidates for the office of council member receive votes as follows. Stephen K. LaFredo, 1,007. Christian Alvert, 805. Stephen LaFredo receiving 1,007 votes is hereby declared to be elected to a two-year term as a council member of Miami Shores Village. That all of the acts and doings of the canvassing board at said runoff election Miami Shores Village are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed. This resolution is effective upon adoption by the Miami Shores Village Council.
All right, thank you. Council, may I please have a motion for approval?
I'd like to move that we approve the resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, all right. Mr. LaFredo? There you are. Would you come to the podium, please, and congratulations along with Judge Harnage? Yes, thank you.
It's been a pleasure to be here this evening. And it reminded me that I swore in in 2003 and a couple of you other folks too, and it's just such an honor to be here. And I'm just thanking Sebastian. Certainly don't see for quite a while. And I'm glad to be able to do this this evening. And Mr. LaFredo, if you would please be prepared to take the oath of office raising your right hand and swearing or affirm as follows. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Stephen LaFredo.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances of Miami Shores Village.
Observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances of Miami Shores Village.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Shall I just set the podium?
I would just like to make some brief remarks. I promise they will be brief. I first of all want to address my mayor and fellow council members and congratulate the mayor on her history-making election. It's a great day in Miami Shores. I'd also like to congratulate Alice Birch and Jonathan Melz on their reelection to the council. I anticipate them being great colleagues to work with. I'd also like to take this opportunity to personally thank all my supporters who helped during the campaign and the runoff. These include Becky Leonard, Edward Quentin, Caesar Sastre, Jim Garrett, David Gerhart, and Julio Martinez, among many others. Lastly, I want to give my heartfelt thanks to my campaign manager, chief strategist, and number-one supporter, my wife, Diane. I also wish to thank some of my contributors. There's nothing like someone coming forward unasked to help you. That's an old... My mother was strongly Irish, and she said the best Irish friend is the one that comes forward without being asked. And these include Jonathan Rose, Dan Brant, Todd Johnson, Barry Pearl, my brother Marco, and the Federici brothers, Mark and Jim Federici. I could not have done it without their help and support. There are many other people who contributed and helped in my campaign, and to them I will be forever grateful. Lastly, I hope to earn... To be able to earn the trust they have placed in me through my work and efforts with this council over the next two years, and I look forward to a creative, productive, and successful term with my fellow council members.
This time we'll have public comments. For those of you wishing to make public comments, please state your name and address for the record, and please try to... No, please limit your speaking to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. Director Enzo, 9127 Northwest First Avenue. Welcome. Congratulations all. We look forward to a lot of wonderful things from you. There are some issues that were brought up during the course of the campaign, and I just sort of want to underline them so that these are things that you bring forward. One of them is speeding in this town. You had a... Quite an extensive survey done, and I don't really see anything happening at this point other than perhaps a few speed bumps that have gone on. We need turn signals at major intersections. We need more police out on the street to try to get these people to stop speeding. That's number one. Number two, there's talk of permitting. The permitting in this town must be regulated, must be shortened, must be made easier, must be made a lot faster. This has to come from you, from Mr. Benton, and from the department. Lastly, about the charter school. There was a mention made the one evening about something about spending $128,000 for playground and redoing some of the playground, I believe, at the elementary school in order for those children to be able to have a space to play at. Number one, they should be working with Barry University. We should not be spending $128,000 to give them a playground. This is a charter school. This is not a private school. There is a vast difference. So a few of these things, I hope you do keep in mind as you move forward.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Dana Vignali, 9525 Northwest First Court. I also want to say congratulations and welcome, and we look forward to seeing your great work over the next couple of years. I came to speak very briefly about two items. First, I wanted to share with the council and the community about an event that's happening at Horace Mann Middle School this Thursday at 6:00 PM. If you haven't met him, Kevin Lawrence has been the principal there for the last two years. He is outstanding, transformational, and he's doing great work at the middle school. And he's working very hard to bring stellar programs, change the school climate and culture, and more importantly, change the perception of the school. And he's very eager to reconnect and reengage the community. He'll be having his State of Troy address this Thursday, and I hope that you'll come out there to hear a lot of the great improvements that are going on, as well as some great programs he offers, such as the Cambridge Program, as well as middle school redesign, which is an incredible social, emotional learning and innovative opportunities and electives and so forth. He's an incredible school leader, and I hope you'll find some time to come out on Thursday. And the second point I'd like to make is I wanted to express my deep desire as a parent and also as a member of the Education Advisory Board for Miami Shores that the new council continue the work and forward motion of the negotiations between the Village of Miami Shores and Miami Dade County Public Schools. Once Mayor Glenn planted the seed, parents became very excited about this opportunity. They're looking to reengage with the elementary school as well. They are looking for academic rigor. Through Mayor Glenn's proposal, it would bring the academic rigor, teacher training, et cetera, to the school. I've also met with Ms. Swain. She's fully on board. She's very interested in that forward motion as well. And so I hope that the new council will continue that forward progress. I would also like to respectfully request, as a member of the EAB, that it is considered that we could be included in these negotiations. We had a discussion at our last EAB meeting and created a subcommittee just in case the council would consider allowing us to come to the table as well in negotiating the inter-local agreement that could potentially come out of the initial discussions. We will bring education expertise, legal expertise, business expertise to the table. I work in the school board, so there's quite a few things that I am aware of that we could potentially work towards asking for, as well as grants to help mitigate the costs, whether it's, you know, from fundraising in the community or whether it's from the village. But we are very eager to work together with you to come up with the best interlocal agreement that we can come up with, and one that would be, you know, also making sure that the school is accountable for what we do negotiate, that it's being implemented at the school site. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Next item is the May House of the Month Certificate of Recognition presented to the Lewis family, 760 Northeast 96th Street.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
The other half couldn't be here. She's watching the kids, so.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for coming tonight, and we have this house up here on the screen here. This house is located at 760 Northeast 96th Street. And although this property is located on one of the busiest streets of Miami Shores, the design of the front of the house, as well as the landscape, can give the property a very nice laid-back appeal. The placement of ornate stone and neatly maintained yard and the placement of hedges complement the front driveway area. And Mr. Lewis's personal landscape experience provided the layered hedge design and the Italian cypress subtly accentuate the front of the house. Very well done. It's beautifully done.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
For the recognition, thank you.
No worries. With that, I'll come down and give you your House of the Month plaque.
Okay.
Give my hand.
Vice Mayor and Councilman Melz, just to go down one more, just for the pictures. Sorry about that. One, two, three. One more. Excellent. Congratulations.
Good lady, huh?
Next item is the Miami Dade Fire Rescue Annual Service Delivery Presentation by Fire Chief Downey.
Welcome, Chief Downey.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. Manager. Dave Downey, I'm your fire chief, and I appreciate the opportunity. I know you got earlier in the year the annual report. Just wanted to go over a little bit again. Miami Dade Fire Rescue is your full-service fire department, and we operate 70 fire stations, 145 units. We're still one of the 10 largest fire departments in the United States. And last year, we responded to about 260,000 calls for service. We do that with 2,600 full-time employees. Of that, about 2,000 are firefighters. Last year, we placed two new units into service and broke ground on a rebuild of a station. We hired five recruit classes totaling 131 firefighters. And we have another class going on now, and a class set to start at the end of May. We opened our temporary station in North Miami, Station 18, which, those of us that have been around a while, we used to have a Station 18. Well, we've resurrected that. So we have new services over there in North Miami. And I'm proud to say that last year, we improved our ISO rating from a four to a two. And of the 43,000 fire departments, there's only 1,300 that enjoy that score. So we did remarkably well there, and we're on the cusp of a one. We are continuing to get stronger. We placed three new units into service in April and are finishing up with a temporary station and continue to hire firefighters. So specific to the village, we've been serving here since 1975. It's near and dear to my heart. In the early '90s, I worked here on Rescue 30 with those that remember the good Captain Gerdak. I was his rescue lieutenant here in the old station. Last year, we responded to 1,189 calls here in the village, and the primary responses, of course, are provided by Station 30. But it's important to realize that we are a fire department, not a fire station. So there's five service fire stations within three miles of the village. And the total resources are six fire engines, seven rescues, and a chief totaling 46 firefighters. So if you just need one truck, fine, but we are required on a house fire to put a minimum of 15 firefighters on the scene and a larger structure up to 43 firefighters at one time. We do a customer service satisfaction survey countywide. Out of a possible five, we're 4.86, and here in the village, a little less, 4.5, but still doing well. And the average response time, which is the yardstick we're measured against, and something we continue to work on year after year. There's things I can't control, station location, traffic, but our alerting, our processing, our turnout. If you go to the station, there's actually a countdown timer in the station to let the guys and gals know that they've got to get out the door in less than a minute. Our life-threatening emergency response time countywide is seven minutes and 41 seconds, but here in the village, it's five minutes and 21 seconds. Very good. And for fires, six minutes and seven seconds. Here, two minutes and 41 seconds. So didn't have a whole lot of fires, but we still did very well. Oh, I forgot to mention, I have Ms. Maria Reyes with me. She oversees our strategic planning and finance and really puts all of this stuff together. But I just appreciate the opportunity to present and look forward to any questions you have. I also... One of the things that I've been trying to do is connect us with the cities that we serve, and so I hope that you can welcome this little token of our appreciation. But this is our emblem for our fire department, and it captures our colors with our green and our gray apparatus. So this is for you all, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have and appreciate the opportunity.
Any comments or questions? Mr. LaFredo?
I have a comment. It's okay. Chief, you may not know this, but about four and a half years ago, my wife and I did something very stupid we didn't know at the time. On a cold, dry night, we left our dryer running in the kitchen, and I think you know what happened. And we were almost killed, but we were able to get out of the house. The fire department was there immediately. Our dog was trapped in the house, and it was like a movie. They went into the... This was horrible, horrible conflagration, terrifying. They went in. Everybody else is coming out. They went in. The firefighters went in. They got the fire out. They got the burning dryer, threw it out of the house, and the next thing I know is these two heavily uniformed men silhouetted against the light in the back, bringing the poor dog out of the house, saving his life. I cannot commend your department enough.
I appreciate that, sir.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may, Mr. Melz.
Chief, thank you for coming. I do have a question for you. We're trying to redevelop our Second Avenue and new construction, trying to beautify it and do different things, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I will. Are there any plans for any capital improvements on our station? And we love having our station here, but it is a little dated. Is there any plans for beautification or for maybe some other improvements?
I know it's slated for a new roof. That I know. Besides that, I could see on the timeline as far as painting goes, but if there's anything that we can do or any suggestions...
Sure.
We'd be happy to look at it, for sure.
We'll forward you some.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to announce for the people here, the people who are home, the materials that were given to the council point out very subtly that you're retiring in a week or two?
Yes, I am, next Friday.
And I, for one, and probably speak for the council as a whole, we would like to thank you for your service and your dedication to the village all these years.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
I'd also like to say, Chief, 37 years you've served. 37 years, and we're grateful and thank you for your service. That's a long time, so I hope you enjoy your retirement. It's well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving your report this evening.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
I'll leave this with the...
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item, Planning and Zoning Board Annual Report presented by Chairman Busta.
Welcome, Mr. Busta. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to first say congratulations to the newly-elected, reelected, and returning council members. Looking forward to working with each and every one of yous. Anyway, you're going to love me tonight because I'm going to be short and brief. Last year, we reviewed, it was presented to us, applications that totaled about 100 for site plan approvals, which our percentage of approval was very high. I think I only know of two that didn't get approved. And as far as ordinances presented to us, proposals that were proposed to us, we reviewed 16 of them. I feel we have a good, strong planning and zoning board with members that consist of some great expertise and knowledge in various fields, and it's a big contributing thing that I think makes it a good, strong board. Any questions or comments? I'll be happy to... Mrs. Birch, how are you?
Hi, I'm fine, thank you. I want to commend you because I know you took the chairmanship, and it... You were filling some different shoes, for sure, and your leadership style is commendable. As everyone knows, when you go before planning and zoning, sometimes there's a lot of angst and a lot of uncertainty. And Mr. Busta, I'd really commend you for your leadership and the way that you run the meetings.
Thank you.
It's really a pleasure to go.
Thank you for the comments. It's a pleasure to serve. It's a learning process, like I said when I interviewed, to get onto the planning and zoning board. And you've got to be open to it because things are certainly changing in our industry, in our village, and it's constantly new knowledge and new information coming on. And I thank you all for that.
Any other comments?
I do want to echo what Councilman Birch, or Vice Mayor Birch, has said about your service, and I think it shows that we don't hear many complaints about planning and zoning. It goes to show that the quality of the people who are serving, and want to encourage the people, applicants, and everybody to keep it up, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you for your comments. I think it's important to remember that we're all village members here and to take that into consideration, and it seems to work for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Busta. Thank you.
Next item is the presentation to Vice Mayor Alice Birch from Optimist International South Florida District for Community Outreach.
At this time, can the representatives from the Optimist Club please approach the podium?
This can be quick. I saw this on the agenda, and I said, what? What is this? And it's because it was for something that I hadn't done yet. But on Sunday, I had the privilege to judge the oratorical contest. It was held out in Miami Springs, and it was put on by the Optimist Club. An individual was there who won the oratorical contest in 1967. This is a very longstanding, wonderful way for kids to express themselves, and you cannot believe the talent that I saw. I know all of us sitting up here could have learned something from their presentation style, and it was really a wonderful event. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Hard to believe someone from the oratorical contest missed an opportunity to come to the podium.
Consent Agenda. Items are routine self-explanatory matters that are not expected to require discussion or review. Items will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by any member of the council, that item must be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If the public wishes to speak on a matter on the consent agenda, they must inform the village clerk prior to the start of the meeting. They will be recognized to speak prior to the approval of the consent agenda. Item 8A, approval of the April 16, 2019 village council meeting minutes. Item 8B, approval of the governmental entity certificate of resolution. Item 8C, a resolution of the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, authorizing the current mayor to be substituted for the prior mayor as signatory for applicable village bank accounts and providing for an effective date. Madam Mayor, I have not received any requests from the public to pull any of the items.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 9, village council appointments. As indicated in my memo to the village council, these are housekeeping items, and based on previous practice, individual council members will volunteer to serve on their preferred board of choice, and such appointments are ratified by way of consensus. Item 9A, appointment of one council member to the general employee pension board.
Do we have any council members that would like to nominate and/or volunteer?
I'd like to nominate Mayor Wagler to the general employee pension board.
Walked right into that.
By consensus.
By consensus. Well, you've been on this pension board, right, Vice Mayor Birch?
I've been on... On general and police.
Hmm. And you don't wish to continue?
Not on general.
In all honesty, it's difficult for me because the meetings are at 8:00 AM, and I will never be able to make one with my children.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to serve on the police pension board, but if no one else wants to serve on the general employee, I'll fill in on that spot, depending on what the council wants to do.
Item 9B, appointment of two council members to the police retirement pension board.
Councilman Melz, will you continue with me?
Only if you continue, I'll continue.
Very good.
Okay.
Item 9C, appointment of a council representative and an alternate representative to the Miami Dade League of Cities.
Vice Mayor Birch, I know you've been participating in this, and I would love to join you in that endeavor as well. You still want to continue on?
Sure, I was the alternate this past time.
Oh, you were the alternate? Okay. Okay.
However, I feel it's important.
Okay.
I saw that you know a lot of people in the league.
Yes.
So I think that if you were the representative, I would be certainly willing to be the alternate.
It would be a pleasure. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Appointment of a council representative to the Florida League of Cities.
Sure.
Would you like to volunteer for that?
I absolutely will.
All right. Great, thank you.
And finally, appointment of a council representative to the Green Corridor District Board of Directors.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would nominate Councilman Brady for that.
Absolutely. Do you agree? Great.
Yeah, it would be my pleasure to continue serving on that board. So thank you, council.
Very good.
Item 10A, discussion and possible action on resolution expanding the resident-only parking area to the Northeast 100th Street between First Avenue and Northeast Second Avenue. This item is sponsored by Councilman Sean Brady.
Councilman Brady, would you like to introduce the item?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, in beginning to, you know, set the table and prepare for some of the changes that the council had been, you know, with the will of the people trying to make in downtown Miami Shores, one of the things that the council had done was pass an ordinance that allows us to designate different stretches within the border of an area that we set up around downtown as resident-only. And so far, the way that we approached it was to do like an opt-in type of approach. So when people in the particular neighborhood ask, reach out to us, that's when, you know, we decide to include that area. And so far, I think things have been going very well in the areas where we had designated it, and we did have... We did have some villagers, in particular Ms. Pfeffer, who had reached out to us about asking us to include their stretch of Northeast 100th Street between Northeast First and Second Avenue, and I agreed to bring that to the council. And so what we're doing here today is asking the council by resolution to include that area, or and to allow the manager to go through the steps that he goes through when the steps that he goes through when we go to include an area for inclusion in the resident-only parking area.
Thank you. Council, may I have a motion?
Go ahead.
Second? I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to bring up a couple of things. As I thought about this issue, which is actually to the, just to the south end of this building. What happens on the south end of this building, if you're approaching the area either to go to the police station or to Village Hall because you decided to make the southern approach, is that you find most of the time, all of those spaces along there are full. So I thought that along with saying that we would like it to be resident-only along the block space, that it would be also perhaps to our benefit and to the benefit of those residents, if we could at least designate one parking space along there for people who are visiting. Because it's often, I don't want to impose on the police department, but they do have plenty of spaces to the south side and the extra lot that we now own. So it would seem to help to, let's say you're parking to drop electronics in the electronics bin. There are literally, I have been tempted to park in front of that house at one time or another, because there literally often is no place to put your car while you take your electronics out and put them in. So I'm just saying that it would be kind of neat if we could designate one of them, do a little curb painting and go ahead.
No, that sounds like great. Mr. Manager, is that something we can look at implementing?
Absolutely.
All right, fantastic. Thank you, council. Appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Can we please call the question?
All those in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Very good. Motion passes.
Village announcements. The next meeting of the Village Council will be held at the Village Hall on Tuesday, May 21, 2019, beginning at 6:30 p.m. Village Hall and Village offices will be closed on Monday, May 27, in honor of Memorial Day. Regular garbage pickup schedules will be followed. The village will present a Memorial Day ceremony on Monday, May 27, at 9:00 a.m. at Memorial Park. In the case of inclement weather, the ceremony will take place at the community center. Please join the village manager, Tom Benton, for his annual informational meeting on hurricane preparedness on Wednesday, May 29, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. at the community center. There are vacancies on the Doctor's Charter School Board, four to be exact, and the Library Board of Trustees, one. Applications can be found on the village website and the clerk's office. It will be accepted through Tuesday, May 24, and June 7, respectively. Plastic reduction community workshops will be held at the community center on Monday, May 13, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Monday, June 10, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Please visit the village website for more information on village events, departments, and to receive agenda notifications. The village clerk's office and Information Technology Department are proud to announce the launch of Granicus, the village's new webcasting application for village council, planning, and code enforcement board meetings. Visitors can now view agendas, minutes, video recording, and live webcasting for village council, planning board, and code enforcement board meetings in a central searchable portal. This new feature also allows interested parties to quickly review the presentations and discussions related to a particular agenda item without having to watch the entire meeting or use the fast-forward function. Simply click on the Village Meetings and Agenda tab located in the center of the village's homepage. And corridor planning study. The Florida Department of Transportation is conducting a planning study for corridor capacity improvements along State Road I-95 from US 1 to just north of Ives Derry Road in Miami Dade County. The study will develop and evaluate improvement concepts and perform planning-level operational evaluations. A series of public workshops will be conducted to offer the public an opportunity to participate in the study. The workshops will begin at 6:00 p.m. with a formal presentation beginning at 6:30. One in specific will be held in Miami Shores on Wednesday, May 22, 2019, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the 9900 Northeast Second Avenue Building. And just point of personal privilege, I wanted to thank Nancy Signo and Bob Bourne for serving as poll workers during both elections. I appreciate your participation. Village Council comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's start to our right at the end of the dais. Councilman Melz, do you have any comments?
I feel like I'm back in school. I'm getting poked on. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to elaborate on Madam Clerk's mention of the plastic reduction workshop. So there's going to be social media, there's going to be postings, so explain it a little bit more. But now, this is your chance, I'm speaking to everybody at home also, now's your chance to get involved. Tell us what you want us to do. Do you want us to ban plastic bags? Do you want us to put a fee on them? Do you want us to do other things? I mean, there's, you know, all over the state of Florida, it's a hot topic, and obviously straws have been dealt a setback in Tallahassee, but the state of the law, and we may have some education on that on Monday also, is that it appears that we're still able to do something with plastic if you want us to. So it's an open forum. There'll be a presentation on plastics and some of the problems, but I'm going to recap the last, what, seven or eight months that Mr. Benton and I have been dealing with publics to get them to change their behaviors, and we're going to take input. And if nobody shows up, then guess what? We'll do nothing. But if you all want something to happen, now's your chance to let us know. So hope to see you. We're going to do two of them. You know, some people can't make it next Monday, but would love to see a great showing on it, and this is one of the grab, you know, the most important issues that we have facing us and our environment and our children and our children's children, so let's all get involved.
Vice Mayor Birch?
Thank you. Thank you for the leadership on plastics. I'd just like to have just a couple of post-election comments. And I am not only very proud of everyone up here, but everyone involved in the election because I felt that, in my heart, that it was one of the finer ones in terms of human behavior in Miami Shores that I have seen, and I've seen a lot of them. And I really appreciate the camaraderie amongst the candidates as well as amongst the people who are working for the candidates. I think that it's commendable. I'd like all the elections to be like that, but look what a great start it gave us. It gave us, those of us sitting up here, a chance at the kind of camaraderie that helps councils and elected officials get things done. And that, to me, is very important, and I'd like to thank everyone up here and who was involved in the election for that. And I also think that it looks toward the fact that over the last couple of years, we have had that kind of council, and I look forward to serving on one like that again. So thank you.
Councilman Brady?
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two quick things. The first, I wanted to thank the clerk for continuing to push ahead with the modernization of our, just the infrastructure around how we share our meetings and prepare for them and the outcomes with the public. I've been really looking forward to that for a while, so thank you for that. The only other thing I did want to just briefly mention, I saw we had this memo here from the manager thanking Pastor Andrews from the Presbyterian Church for, let's see, repainting the guardrails down there at the Bayfront Park. I appreciate, Mr. Manager, you writing this memo to thank them. I wasn't even aware that they were doing that, and I wanted to just extend that thanks again. And the last thing I want to say is I'm just really glad to have a whole new council seated and looking forward to working with you in the next two years, so thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council, I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to serving with you. There were a number of items that came up in the campaign in terms of the outreach as other members in the community found. My wife and I made a list of nine items. Some of them don't rise to the level of coming to the council, and I'm feeling my way because I'm inexperienced, but I'll try and work on those and bring them to you or to staff as is appropriate, so be expecting those coming.
Thank you. I would like to also echo Vice Mayor Birch's comments. I've found the election process to be quite enjoyable, and I enjoyed getting to know everybody, and I look forward to working with my fellow council members going forward for the next four years. I'd also like to say thank you to the village itself, to staff, the manager, and the village clerk for running the election process so well. I know it takes a lot of work and a lot of hard work, so I want to thank the both of them for making sure each election went smoothly. Thank you very much. And with that, do we have any other comments or discussion? No? There being no further business, before the council, we are therefore adjourned. Thank you.